To hear a second, without objection, the minutes will stand. We do not have any ordinances on first reading. Under community development, we have item A. Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Community Development, Code's Division, to enter into agreements with the Grass Buster Lawn Maintenance and River City Remodeling for their litter abatement and structure boarding services with an option to renew with each vendor each year for up to four years for an amount not to exceed $350,000.
Thank you. Let's go back under community development. Our first item, A, under ordinances. Can you read that for me, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter II, by adding Article 16 Chattanooga Department of Community Development, including the Office of Family Empowerment Advisory Board.
Thank you so much. That takes care of the ordinance. We are honored. We did read Resolution A. Under Fire, items B and C, we now have corrected. We're good? Okay. Appreciate that. Under Parks and Public Works, will you read item D, please?
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into public-private partnership agreement with MBSC Black Creek LLC for the collection and long-term study of data related to infiltration, evaporation, and water reuse volumes at Black Creek Club in exchange for the issuance of credit coupons at market rate in accordance with City Code Section 31-356.2.
Very good. And we did cover this in committee last week. Chairman Hester, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And asked substantial questions. I don't see any lights on this item. So moving into our purchasing questions, we have three purchases tonight. If you'll take a look at those. You did receive these earlier in the week. And we have two RFPs that are in our packet as well this evening. Madam Vice Chair.
I do have a question about the RFP, the human resources RFP. Could we get more information on that one?
Yes, Vice Chairwoman Dowling.
Thanks, Brent.
The, um, this was something that was originally included in the fiscal year '22 budget. This was something that Mayor Kelly heard about from first responders during the campaign. And we included money in the budget to do a pilot for mental health services or behavioral health, behavioral health services for first responders in particular. So currently, um, you know, firefighters and police officers are able to get the same services that we offer to all employees. But as we all know, first responders have different needs when it comes to mental health. And so what this is for is for us to go and find a service provider that could provide specific services for first responders that meets the needs of first responders. And this would essentially be a pilot until, and see how it goes and start building that out.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think this is a great, a great RFP. So thank you, Brent.
Brent, while you're up here, and Seth, I know we've talked about this, you and I, and leadership and Fire. I'm hoping this is an extension of that conversation when we talk about PTSD.
Definitely. And that's definitely one of the biggest differences between, uh, mental health issues that first responders face versus the general employee population.
Well, I tell you what, I really appreciate you looking into this in the form of an RFP and following through because it's something we've talked about for quite a while. And that's good work. It's good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for bringing attention to that. If you'll take a look, seeing no other lights for purchases, you'll take a look at your August 9th agenda. I am anticipating a few questions. As we move through, especially somewhere around economic development. Councilman Henderson. Yes, sir. You're active.
Hey, Jermaine.
Yes, sir.
So a couple of questions, and I see we've got representatives from the lookouts and from perimeter properties here today. Uh, I think, I think to help me understand better, um, when we approved the TIF district, we're approving that for 30 years, correct?
That is correct.
And so regardless of whether the stadium gets paid off early or not, that TIF district will remain in place for 30 years?
That is correct. It would require council action to be able to, to unwind it. So, but a TIF can be amended now at a later date.
Okay. So when we defined the, the project, I guess.
Yes.
Is the project more than the stadium? Because I, I guess what had me curious is, I thought I understood, uh, Mr. Goldberg at some point in time say that, you know, he anticipated getting the stadium paid off earlier than 30 years because of the amount of, of, uh, development that would happen. But then he also mentioned, you know, money that was additional to the stadium could go for infrastructure. So I guess my question is, from the city standpoint, at what point are we wrapping this up? And that, that new revenue that we are generating, creating, go back into the general fund?
Well, throughout the TIF period, there is new revenue that goes into the general fund. That is, that's true for all TIFs.
Okay. So let me rephrase it. When will the 100% of that new revenue generated go back into the general fund?
So at the end of the 30-year period, that's when the 100% goes in. Um, uh, at the, at the same time, though, the council does have the ability prior to the 30-year period to amend the TIF to a shorter period if you so choose.
Okay. All right. So, and just added that a little bit. So one thing we have on the front end of this is we have a 30-year bond, 30-year TIF, 30-year lease. We want all those to match up. Um, it is the, the most conservative way to do this for the early years because we want to make sure that we have the smallest debt service payment possible. You'll recall, we're capitalizing interest to make sure that we don't have any debt payments for two years while we build the stadium. For the first few years, we want the smallest debt service possible. Uh, and this is based on models that they use, they're using in Knoxville currently and that they've used in other places. Um, we want the lease to line up with that so that that, that payment stream comes in every year for 30 years, 30-year lease, 30-year, 30-year bonds. Um, and so all of it's set up on the front end. We do expect to generate enough development around the stadium to, to refinance the bonds and pay them off earlier. Um, I think once we get to that point and we know how much increment's being generated, when the bonds can be paid off for sure, um, then that is the point when I think, you know, the, the city, the CFO, whether it's me or someone else, would come to council and say, we're sufficient now. We're asking that the, that this TIF be amended to, you know, maybe be a 15- or 20-year TIF versus a 30-year TIF. Then 100% would start coming into the general fund. But until that point, we want enough increment generated to pay off the stadium, capital reserve, pay back the city and county for any debt service that we might have to cover in the early years, and build an Alton Park connector. Those four things are laid out in the Economic Impact Plan. Once those four things are met, even if the TIF has not been amended, additional increment is still accumulated, held by the IDB, and allocated for infrastructure or anything else that's needed throughout the TIF district. So, um, you know, there, there is a way to use that money similar to how we would use it in general fund for capital projects. It's just allocated by the IDB. But I would say that in the future, once we get enough increment to, to refinance the bonds and pay them off early, uh, the city, whoever the finance administrator is, will certainly be coming to city council, uh, to ask for an amendment to that TIF so that we can start capturing 100%.
Okay. And Jermaine, let me, uh, thank you, Brent, for that. Uh, on our MOUs, have we, have we got those worked out to where we have some actual clawbacks or maybe penalties if the development does not occur? Because I think that's, you know, what I keep hearing from constituencies and reading is, you know, to protect the taxpayers. So, you know, what, what I'm looking for is, you know, to create a plan, uh, that, that generates this revenue, but, but it also reduces as much risk as we possibly can to the taxpayers.
Right. So the MOUs, um, and what, and we obviously have one of the property owners here from perimeter properties. The donation of the land that would be used for the sports authority is a donation that is going to happen no matter what, um, provided that the TIF is approved and that a sports authority is created. Um, that is not an insignificant piece of land that, that would be donated. We are talking about somewhere in the range of between eight to 15 acres of land. Right now, Core Development currently values and appraises the land that they have at about a million dollars an acre. Um, and so you're talking about a significant piece of land that will become the property of the sports authority once the sports authority is created and if the TIF is approved. And then that, at that point, um, that land will never go back to the property owners. That will be publicly owned land, uh, in perpetuity. Um, and so, uh, as of right now, um, we have the MOUs drafted for both, uh, our partners with, uh, Hardball Capital and also with Perimeter Properties, which will also be accompanied, uh, by the commitment from Core Development, which is attached to the MOU at this current time. Um, and then, yeah, I lost my train of thought. But, 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 but those are the thing, oh, what I was going to mention is, is that when it comes to some of the stuff that will come along with the baseball, a lot of that language will also be contained in the lease agreement that the baseball team signs with the sports authority. Um, because, and that will oversee and govern, uh, much of the sort of requirements and clawback language for the baseball team. Um, and then as, as we continue to work through this, um, we are also, uh, going to be sort of leading and convening, uh, the South Chattanooga Neighborhood Association, along with some community groups, uh, to work on a, on a community benefits agreement that can be beneficial for the community.
What about clawbacks for making sure that there's $170 million worth of investment?
So we can't clawback anything from Core Development, which has the commitment for the $170 million, because we don't have a legal, we don't have a legal relationship with Core.
But, but, but we sort of do with perimeter, right?
We do have a legal relationship with perimeter. Um, and so as we, you know, and so as we, as we continue to work through this, um, you know, they were obviously going to make that land available to us. Uh, that is not an insignificant, uh, amount of land with an insignificant value. Um, and, um, that land will never go back to them.
Yeah, but we're going to commit to put an $80 million stadium basically on it, which we're anticipating development to come with that.
Yes.
And in order to pay for that stadium. So that's where I'm looking at trying to protect the taxpayers from some of that risk. If, if at least we know that $170 million worth of investment is coming, we do know then it's going to generate some revenue to help pay for that investment that we're making on that land.
Yes, and we actually anticipate that there will be other investments that haven't been really sort of talked about as much throughout the TIF district. Um, and so we anticipate, uh, that there is going to be a significant amount of investment that's going to happen. Um, in addition to that, you will see, uh, that there is a, a letter of commitment from New City Properties to both mayors that also articulates that New City Properties, um, will directly themselves also pursue, uh, an investment of $100 million just for property that they actually design and build out themselves, not including the rest of the property, uh, that would be used under the master development. Jim Irwin and New City Properties, they're not going to build out the entire 120 acres themselves, uh, but they will take some part of that 120 acres and build it out themselves and have committed a $100 million investment as well.
Mr. Chairman, finally.
Yes, sir.
Just, I, I want to add just a couple of things to what Jermaine's saying. And I, I understand the, the question and the purpose of wanting to protect the, the city as much as possible. First thing I would say is that the, the value of the land that's being donated, which becomes public land in perpetuity, is three times more valuable than all of the clawbacks in the North River TIF. So, I mean, I, you know, I, I try to look at things as, you know, compare and contrast as much as possible. Um, also, the other thing I'll say is, let's say, so we have the land, we build a state, we issue bonds, we build a stadium. Baseball will be played there regardless of what happens around the stadium. Um, we will get a million dollar lease payment, we'll get, we budgeted 600,000 sales taxes, which is extremely conservative. It'll be closer to, to 750,000. We'll get parking revenue, which is the most conservative thing we budgeted. It's almost silly how low we budgeted. Um, that will be higher than the 200,000 that we, we budgeted per year. Um, we will have, there are projects already active in the TIF area that will generate increment right away for the, for the TIF. Um, it's not the development right around the stadium, but in the TIF area, there is stuff that's started but hasn't come online yet. That will generate increment. Uh, worst-case scenario, if we have zero development around the stadium, we're talking about around 800,000 each, uh, for the city and county to cover debt service. And, and which, by the way, is like 0.4% of our budget, um, like 0.4% of our annual budget. But the other thing is, if we have zero development happening around the stadium, then we, I'm just going to say, we have much bigger problems in the entire city if we have zero development happening. I mean, that, to me, is, that means catastrophic. You know, we are, we're doing everything we can to dig out of, uh, the worst depression that we've ever seen in, in city history. So while I do, I do understand the question, but I, I really believe that the value, you know, we are getting a land donation that is significant, that, that if the development doesn't happen, they don't get that back. And it's worth 15 million, you know, call, even if it's worth 10 million dollars. Um, that's more than the whole TIF that we are providing increment on, at North River. So, and those are the same sized TIFs in terms of geographic area, so that's why I compare them. I just think the, the possibility of what we have at South Broad is just so much greater, uh, than, than what we have at North River. I know they're totally different purposes, but when we think about like what we're providing to people and what we're, we're including as a clawback, it seems like we're getting a valuable clawback built into this because we're getting public land in perpetuity.
I'll leave it there for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. Any other questions regarding, let's just go back a little bit, uh, under economic development. Pretty much, I think, the core of our discussion, we anticipated today was going to be items D through H. You'll take a look at those, council. And I know that we've had full educational sessions, and this is probably conversation number five, six.
Yes.
But these items have finally made it to our agenda, Jermaine. So I want to make sure that we, uh, have ample opportunity for any council member to ask questions while they are on our agenda. We touched a little bit earlier at strategic planning about the need for it. We have a sports authority board, another sports authority board. Brent, I don't know whichever, whichever one, the one of you want to touch on that now. Again, a little bit of why we have, uh, uh, another board, so to speak, and, and its relation to AT&amp;T Hawk Hill.
Sure. The, the original donation of Hawk Hill to the City of Chattanooga, or actually, it was, it was the reversal, the City of Chattanooga, which owned Hawk Hill back during the time period where the City of Chattanooga was, had its own school district, uh, because it obviously used to be the home of Kirkman Technical High School, uh, which was a city school. Um, that was obviously donated to the River City Company, uh, many, many years ago. And then the River City Company conveyed that land over to the creation of a newly-created City of Chattanooga Sports Authority. That City of Chattanooga Sports Authority was primarily created for the purpose of helping to, um, sort of facilitate the construction of AT&amp;T Field when the lookouts at that point in time were looking for a new stadium when they left Ingalls Stadium. Um, and so that's how this, the City of Chattanooga Sports Authority was sort of came, came into existence. Fast forward to today, you have a situation where both the city and the county, um, are contributing to a TIF for a public stadium. Uh, and because of the county's participation in the TIF, it is only fair to have a new sort of jointly, jointly formed sports authority that has both representation selected by the county as well as representation selected by the city. Right? And so that's why you have to have the new joint sports authority. The current sports authority will, will continue to exist, um, at least until 2025. So they have at least another three years in which they will need, be needed. Hey, so.
Jermaine, if, if we only knew.
If we only knew.
The answer to that question.
Right.
That Councilwoman Coonrod just asked. I didn't, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hit your light, but that was, that was, you've got a great voice.
Right on, right on cue. So, um, uh, but yes, the, the current sports authority will continue to be needed for at least another three years. But, um, and the reason that we have that three-year time span is because, let's say a best-case scenario, we get all of our approvals, uh, through, um, to approve the TIF district, and then the new sports authority is formed, and then let's just say ambitiously, construction is able to start within, by the end of the year, uh, which is ambitious. It's still going to be a, a minimum 18 to 24 months for construction to be completed. So you're, you're, the earliest that the, the team could be looking at moving into a new stadium would be for the 2025 baseball season. Uh, so you, you, you gotta have a place for them to play for the next three years, essentially. And so you need the current City of Chattanooga Sports Authority to continue to manage AT&amp;T Field during that time period.
Sure. And that sports authority board actually holds the deed.
Yes.
And so will the new one.
Correct. They will be the owners of the, of the stadium and the land.
Very good.
Yes.
That, that does explain the, the creation of that. Dr. Burris, go ahead.
Hey, Jermaine.
Yes, ma'am.
Give the, the, the existing sports authority the courtesy of letting them know that and why. That was a great explanation.
Yes, ma'am. We, I, I attended their most recent meeting.
Do they understand all of that now?
Yes, ma'am. We've, we've, we've explained it. I, also in attendance was, uh, Emily Mack from the River City Company to kind of understand the dynamic and the, the relationship between, and the part that the River City Company played.
And they're good with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
You good, Dr. Burris?
Yeah.
Thank you for the question. Um, Jermaine, I am seeing no other lights on items D through H. So if not, I will ask council to continue to look at the rest of your August 9th agenda and hit your light if you have any questions about any particular items on August 9th. We'll take this opportunity to go back to tonight's agenda on ordinances under, under first reading. This is a planning case we had heard before in my district. There is one amendment that we will, uh, will ask to be made, and that is from a six-foot fence to a seven-foot fence, and that seems to have quelled and addressed the concerns as I did meet with residents on a wonderfully hot Sunday afternoon, and I was, we worked that out, and I think it's going to be a great amendment. So we should, I think, ask for that to be made this evening. So no other questions on August 9th. Uh, Councilman Hester, see your light in there.
The chairman is aware that we're withdrawing 69.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's aware.
That will probably be noted in Planning and Zoning Committee by, uh, Madam Chair of Planning and Zoning, and then, but that, since it is published, will be a motion that needs to be made from the floor on the 9th. So.
Thank you.
We will make sure that is, uh, that noted and addressed, sir. Appreciate you bringing that back up to our, for consideration. Madam Vice Chair, did you need a, good? All right. If you would move into future consider wa, uh, future considerations, we've had an eventful afternoon. And take a look at items coming onto the agenda, and let me know if you have any questions or concerns about future considerations. Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, for item 8A, could we get more information on that particular request? I know it's a great thing, um, but, uh, could we just get a little bit more information on that particular request, uh, from Fire?
This is the training tower, Seth.
Yes, I am going to defer to the Fire Department on this if Seth wouldn't mind coming up and chatting about it.
Seth, I, I believe the context of that question is, hooray.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's really only, I, I came up here to say that, hooray. No, this is, this is a huge step in the right direction. We've actually, with, with your approval and, and your, uh, support over the last few years, have been squirreling money away, um, to, to start a planning process. And, uh, we've done that the last three capital years in, uh... Oh, okay.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain, Seth.
Yeah, that's right. But we're, we're, um, we're in the process of, of the planning phase. And this is a great shot, shot in the arm for our partners, from our partners from the county. Uh, we support, uh, all the local fire departments for all the great work they do in our community. Uh, we do that already with our current facilities, and it is just a really well-used piece of property in the city that needs to, needs replacement. So, so yes, we're, we're really excited.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm excited about it, too, and I know many of my colleagues have done fire ops, so we know, um, the definite need for this. Uh, so we are so excited for you guys, and I, I like asking about the fun stuff, so this was a great one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Seth. We're very excited, um, to see that. I know it's been discussed a, a lot of times. Training saves lives, and, uh, I think that's an investment we can all agree on. Councilwoman Hill?
Thank you. Uh, I actually had a question on that item as well, but it's more a procedural clarity question. So we have this essentially on our agenda for the 9th, and now it's listed on future considerations for the 16th. So can you just help me understand if, is this secondary six, August 16th for, and noting that it's going to go into the capital fund? Is that why we have?
I think this is a bit of an error because there was a, um, there was some confusion about when it landed on, uh, future consideration. I defer to this council as to whether or not you prefer it on the 16th or the 9th. Um, uh, but it is currently on the two-week agenda, so it is currently.
So it is, in fact, the same thing, like.
Yes.
Would we need to expand the language on the two-week agenda to make the point that they would be received into the regional training center capital fund? Does that need to be within that resolution?
I defer to the city attorney on that, if it needs to be in the resolution or not.
Because our, I mean, our current, it just says a resolution authorizing Chattanooga Fire Department to accept 1.5 million from Hamilton County toward the construction of a fire training tower versus the future consideration has more detail.
We can expand it in the caption if that's helpful.
Yeah, what do you?
We, we can expand where you want it to go if that, that be the case on here, and we can include that with the caption for the 9th if that's, that's what you wish.
I, I'm fine with however we need to do it. I just want to make sure there weren't two things we needed to vote on.
No, it did, if, if this council's okay with proceeding with this measure, with this, with voting on this on the 9th, then we will have the, uh, the future considerations document is a planning document, and, um, it, it, it does try to give council members a three-week look ahead. Uh, there was essentially a, a mix-up in, in when it was supposed to go to you. Um, but if you are comfortable voting on this on the 9th, then I think we can take this off of obviously future considerations.
Okay. I mean, I'm personally fine with that.
So the question that I would pose to council is, um, well, first of all, we can't receive the funds until we accept the funds, correct?
Right. That's right.
Any objection to keeping this right where it's at? Okay. I didn't think so. So we certainly don't want to stop that up, so thank you very much. Would you like to expand the caption, Councilwoman?
We would prefer to expand the caption, uh, it, it, just to make sure that there's clarity there. So I can, if, with your permission, Chairman, we would just go ahead and adjust it.
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions on future considerations? We will remove that item labeled the 16th. Thank you. If not, we have no departments report today. We will now move into, Madam Chair, are you ready for planning and zoning? Very good.
Okay, everybody's favorite time of the month. I hereby convene the Planning and Zoning Committee. And can I get a motion on the minutes, please? Thank you. Uh, all right. So in keeping with our new routine for how we're doing, uh, planning and zoning, um, we have provided everyone with a list of the planning and zoning cases that came before the planning commission, um, along with information about whether or not there was opposition. And Karen is prepared to present to us, um, the handful of cases to begin with that, um, that did have opposition at planning commission. Karen, there's one, uh, let's see, where's our case that is going to be? Uh, 169, count, yeah, 1, 0169, since that's going to be withdrawn, I don't see that we need to have a presentation on that. Um, but do any of my colleagues need to have a presentation on any other cases? We are happy to go over each and every one. Councilmembers, select next.
So you don't need to present 20220150?
I've met with the neighborhood and everything's cool. So we're good.
Um, I, well Jenny, excuse me, Calhoun Hill, I did have one question. And, and that is the neighborhood's fine, but I noticed that you all said deny, and I believe it was because of an old plan. So there's no problem there, right?
We, we had recommended denial because of, you're correct, it's an older plan, I think from the early, I think maybe 2003, I don't have the date in front of me.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay, we're good.
Okay, all right, so our first item, 20220150, we won't, we won't do a presentation. Okay, thank you very much. Look at us being efficient. Anybody else? Need to see a case or comment on a case before we get going? Okay, we're looking good, but you can, um, certainly let me know as we move into the meeting. Also, we have a handful of items today that are amendments to our zoning ordinances, so we'll take a look at those. And a planning resolution, and we also are going to get a sneak peek into the area 11 plan. So we'll let Karen take it away.
Okay, I'm caress her.
Oh, did you want to do area 11 first, Dan? I'm sorry. Of the whole thing? Or you've got it, never mind.
No work.
I misunderstood, I'm sorry, I thought you were doing that before area 11.
So, um, just want to give you a heads up that on our Planning and Zoning Committee, each month for the rest of the year and probably for some time going forward, um, we will absolutely be presenting the zoning cases each month as Karen does an amazing job. And, um, and other, our other staff, um, Brian Schultz and others, um, who participate in developing the recommendations and working with Planning Commission. Um, and I'm very thankful to have Karen represented us, representing us every month. But we did kick off the zoning ordinance update this month, um, with our consultant, Camero's. We have had one public meeting, we will have other public meetings, many, uh, over the coming months with stakeholders and, um, and have some in the evening. But I did want to announce that, that we've officially kicked it off, and Karen, um, will be, and I will be giving updates every month on the progress. Um, we also, as you know, have two RFPs that are, um, being advertised for, uh, for planning teams that are going to help us consultants, that'll help us start working on updating, um, the city's area plans. And then we even, um, for example, have a, uh, some work that Brian Schultz has been doing on looking at all the duplexes in the city and all the issues and ways to resolve some of those questions. So I, I want to just, um, tonight is going to be, it's kind of the start of that. Um, Karen's going to give us, um, we'll go through the zoning, um, code changes, and then Eric will cover, uh, area 11. But I just want you all to expect every month, we're going to be giving you some additional items, um, because it's just important for y'all to keep up, to speed with what we're doing. I'm also in the next week going to send you kind of a six-month, half, half-year update on a lot of the other, so you'll sort of have a, the big picture of everything that's happening in our department. But I just wanted to let you have that before we got too deep into the other.
All right, thanks, Dan. Sorry, I got confused about the order you wanted to speak in.
Um, I'm going to ask our IT partner to bring up the other presentation. Um, I think I've confused him. Um, we have eight zoning cases. We have the one that was requested for withdrawal. We also have one, um, which is D on your agenda, case 20220162, for a townhouse development on Hickson Pike. The applicant's requesting a month deferral. Um, so just want to bring that up, that, um, there's another one that had requested action. So, um, I'll go ahead and get started while that's being pulled up. So, um, all the zoning cases come with some recommendation of approval from Planning Commission. Um, and then we'll kind of batch process the ordinance amendment and go through the resolution. Um, I am going to cover case 20220149. If this is the rezoning for Judd Road, this case did not have opposition at Planning Commission. We have a slightly different schedule for this, and we also received some additional, um, information from a partner after Planning Commission. So, um, this is the request to rezone 60 acres on Judd Road from M1 to C3 with conditions for mixed-use development. And we should have one in there that's got the gray, that starts with a gray slide. Oh, I'm sorry, you're already there. No, you're right, I apologize, thank you. Um, so this case is dependent on the C3 amendment, which is item 6J in your agenda. It's one of the ordinance amendments that we'll touch on, um, after the cases. The applicant is requesting to rezone to C3, not the C3 that we have now, but the C3 that is going to, um, go into effect if you approve the C3 amendment. So in order to make sure that the applicant is getting that C3, we're asking to stagger the cases. So, um, we've been talking about the amendments that are on the agenda for several months now. We did have the applicant that had been heading the, um, for a, um, requesting the C3. So this was the timing that we've come up with to make that happen and have the C3 amendment read. So this would be, um, this is on your agenda for next week. We as staff and working, um, with the city attorney to make sure we're on the right step, and we've communicated this to the applicant. We are, um, requesting that council defer, next week defer this for one week. So really, we want the C3 amendment going through, and this will be following by one week behind it. Um, and so, um, I would, um, just request that, um, we, we keep that kind of a one week behind. And I'll go through a couple other, um, points on this, but otherwise, um, are there any questions about the scheduling? And I'll, I'll cover the C3 amendment, to be clear, at that time. Um, and so another, as I mentioned, we had some additional information. Our staff report noted that part of the, um, public hearing process for Planning Commission, or for, excuse me, for cases, is to get input from the public and other stakeholders about rezoning. And we did receive, um, some communication, um, from Norfolk Southern. They had heard about this case or saw the case at, um, in the newspaper and asked for a meeting with us and, um, our city partners. And so, let me make sure I get to the right, um, slide here. Um, and since we received this information after Planning Commission, we just wanted to make sure that we conveyed it to you. Um, and then also, we are, we as staff are recommending an additional condition to address what we've heard. And so I'm going to read, um, what, um, kind of my notes show that we got out of that Norfolk Southern meeting. So these are my own words, um, trying to summarize the discussion I heard. Um, that Norfolk Southern conveyed that there are approximately six train trips back and forth across Judd Road a week. Additionally, activity can occur at all hours. This activity can include train horns all through the day and night, depending on service schedules, road blockages, banging and clanging of railcars, and squealing of train brakes in addition to crossing maintenance on Judd Road. In addition, they reminded staff that improvements will need to be made by the applicant on Judd Road at the current crossing. And staff's understanding that the needed improvements will be guided by TDOT's railroad-grade crossing standards. So this is kind of a summary of all that discussion. Um, and so RPA is recommending an additional condition, which is that the city and the developer will explore an additional access point to Amnicola Highway. Um, and we did convey this information. The applicant had been, um, um, working with Norfolk Southern, um, or communicating with them for the past year. And, um, but they are aware that we are recommending this additional condition.
We didn't know today was Railroad Day at the city council. Can you walk us through what the plan for the development is as part of the presentation, please?
Yes, um, it is a large 60-acre development. Um, and I will, um, it is in a manufacturing area. They're rezoning part of the site. The area along the river, um, is slated to remain M1. Um, there is no C3 zone property near the site. There's a small C2 piece, um, south of there, and the nearest residential zone property is about a little over a mile and a half way, away. Um, the applicant provided a site plan, which is kind of showing where uses are occurring. Um, the red use is the commercial residential, um, it's kind of hard to see the color, excuse me. The green use, which is A, is the commercial residential. B is residential only, and that's kind of to the interior of the development, and it's ringed by these uses of commercial and residential. And there's a little bit of a difference between the A, commercial residential uses, and the C, commercial residential uses. Um, the, there is a substantial number of conditions the applicant, um, provided. Those have been combined with the C3 standard conditions. Um, we did not have opposition present at Planning Commission. And Planning Commission, um, at the second reading on this, um, found that the request isn't compatible with the Area 3 Historic River-to-Ridge Plan, development form and adjacent land uses, however, based on recent rezoning trends, as some of those industrial uses are transitioning to residential, they found it's appropriate at this location, um, for, um, this zoning. And they're recommending approval with conditions, and the conditions are multiple pages, is in the ordinance. And so it's the combination, again, of those that are the standard C3 conditions, those provided by the applicant. And then we had quite a few conditions worked out through the process and meeting with the applicant and the, the Planning Commission hearing. So they addressed everything from uses, street setbacks, height, building standards, parking access, landscape and buffering standards. So, um, I can go into detail on those, but we did, um, work through those at Planning Commission. Uh, Planning Commission asked us at the, um, July hearing, prior to the July hearing, to sit down, staff and the applicant sit down, go through all the conditions, make sure there was alignment, um, and those were what were presented at Planning Commission.
Thank you, Karen. Do you have any questions? You're good? Wait, you are good, you're not good? Councilwoman Knoll?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chair. I have spoke with the applicant, um, just briefly, three or four times. But what I would like to do, and we, if we can set up, and they have reached out to me several times on this, is to actually go to the site itself.
Okay.
And have a visit there.
Okay, and the applicant is here, and we can coordinate that, or help coordinate that for you? Okay?
Yes.
And, um, sometime in the next two weeks prior to the hearing?
It will be perfect.
Okay, sure.
Are you good, Councilwoman?
I am good, thank you.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey Karen, can you go to a slide and show us where the concern is in Norfolk Southern for that?
Yes. There's quite a few slides here due to all the conditions. So the, um, Judd Road property for the rezoning is highlighted in the yellow. You see the railroad track kind of hugging the southern property line? Um, and at the orange arrow there, that is where there's an at-grade crossing with Judd Road. Um, and Judd Road comes out, um, at the green arrow onto Amnicola, uh, excuse me, the green star onto Amnicola. So that's kind of the, um, that is where Norfolk Southern was giving us generally information about, um, kind of how, um, they operated in the city, but more specifically about that, that location and the activity to the industrial users, um, south of the site. So that spur is serving, um, industrial users south of this, of the Judd Road site.
Is that another spur just above the orange star?
There is, I believe, another one that goes into, um, the property just to the north, um, but I don't, I can't remember the name of that, um, development.
So in recommending, or at least, uh, requesting that the city and developer look into an alternate access, are we talking all the way at the top of the site and behind? Cause otherwise, it looks like you're still crossing railroad one or the other.
We have talked about, um, several, um, I'll, I'll let Dan speak.
So, um, if you look on the map, there actually is, it says 14th Avenue. We hope that was public, it's not, it's not a public right of way. But I think what, in speaking with the developer, um, we just want to investigate, um, a number of ways. It would have to be with the adjoining property owners and with, um, Public Works and, um, TDOT, to just see if there is any other way to get. Because the, the spur goes south, you know, right where the star is, anywhere north of there, if we could find another way of getting it, getting access would be preferable. Um, this is a great site. I mean, it's at the corner of Amicola, um, South, uh, excuse me, Chick Creek and the river, and, um, you know, expected to have many hundred units, and it just is a valuable piece of property. We really think it would be well-served long-term to have just another really good point of access.
No, I, I tend to agree. I actually know the piece of property, that's why I was asking about how exactly can we get out of there without crossing the rail? Okay, all right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Leford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to also point out, that is an intersection with the Tennessee Riverwalk. Um, I am found frequently crossing there, and I just want to make sure, when we talk about additional or ancillary access sites, that that is a place where hundreds of persons on bicycles and walking and also cross at that intersection, so, thank you.
I have a question, is Jermaine still here?
I believe he stepped out.
Okay, so as I looked at this project, something that occurred to me is how often Charles Wood comes and talks to us about how we need more industrial space in Chattanooga? That, that has, oh, hey Jermaine, uh, did you hear me say your name? Oh, okay, that was fast. Uh, so Jermaine, we're looking at this, at this planning case, and it feels like, I mean, obviously it's beautiful riverfront access, um, but it is an industrial site in an industrial location.
Yes.
And, uh, something that occurred to me as I studied this case was hearing Charles Wood's voice in my head saying, "We need more industrial locations in Chattanooga for economic development." And so, you know, we have one that we're talking about residential issues that will be caused because this is in a manufacturing area. So do you know anything about this project? If not, I would love for you just to take a look at it and give us your, your feelings about that, um, for, for all of us for consideration.
I only know a high level about what sort of his plan here, um, in terms of, I think this is mixed-use development plan here, yes. But if, if it would be okay with the council, um, if Charles and I could take a look at this and, and give us your, uh, and we could get you our thoughts?
I would appreciate that, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, once it's, once it's not industrial anymore, it won't be, right?
That's right.
Um, anyway, I'd just like to know. Okay, all right, okay, well, it sounds like, thank you very much. Looks like we're good to move on, Karen?
Okay, um, since, um, we don't need to cover the Standard for Cap Road case, and the other case, um, that we had opposition on has been requested for, um, for withdrawal, I will skip then to the ordinance amendments. And, and we have the four ordinance amendments, um, and they are all related to the same item. So it's going to give you kind of an overview, um, and then touch on each of them briefly, and then we can go into more detail if you'd like. Um, as you know, we have zoning powers, um, is granted to us through the Tennessee Code. Um, TCA does not provide powers to planning commissions to grant variances or deviations. Um, deviations are another word for variances, and the power to grant variances from the zoning ordinance is granted to the Board of Zoning Appeals. There are currently in our code, we have several, um, tools and zones that use the deviation process. So again, regardless of what we call them, they're, um, probably deemed variances under, um, state law. So the amendments are intended to align the zoning ordinance with state law. Some of these change, some of these have been in the zoning ordinance for over a decade. Um, and we're making the changes now, so we don't receive further applications for deviations or variances. We've identified that we have something that conflicts with state law, and we're, um, this is addressing that situation. We do know, um, these are probably have been put in place over time to allow some flexibility. So the zoning code update will be used to identify where we can have flexibility within the bounds of state law. Um, so, um, we've just been getting prepared for the zoning code update, and as part of that, noticed, um, after doing a deep dive, that, um, we probably had a conflict and reached out to, um, the city attorney's office and then some additional state partners. So, um, we do have a batch then. Um, we've been talking about this quite a bit with applicants, um, and property owners and engineering partners for several months now. We presented at a public workshop on June 21st, and then it's been discussed several times at Planning Commission. Why are we doing this? What's the impact? Where do we have cases that are in the process, like the Judd Road case? Making sure we under, we're communicating and staging what would a rezoning that's appropriate look like? Um, so I'll go through the four items briefly, unless you'd like a little bit more detail. Um, 6I is related to infill lot compatibility. We have something to have suburban lots a little more compatible and urban lots compatible. Both of those rely on essentially variances for frontage setback. Um, we are removing both of these items. Um, basically, the standard lot. Basically, the standard lot sizes that are in the zone will apply. You can receive CICA variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And something we did several years ago was amended the RTZ to allow for more urban lot sizes. So we actually created, we amended that RTZ maybe two years ago to be the tool to have more appropriate urban infill development. So and obviously, we see a lot of use of that RTZ in our urban area. So I'm just going to go through them unless you'd like to speak about more details. The second one is the C3 central business, excuse me, central business zone. Last year, we had a, an amendment which was Division 15A for C3 standards for properties being rezoned after that point in time last year. That was heavily built on the deviations process. So this 6J will remove last year's amendment. It will basically remove Division 15A. We'll still have C3. That C3 is the same C3 we've had for a long time. Most of the downtown was zoned C3 prior to Form 8's code. That C3 zone has more limited standards and relies heavily on use of conditions. We have something, I referred to it today in speaking of the Judd Road case, about our standard conditions, standard C3 conditions. And those, I think there's about 13 of them, get applied when we have applicants for the C3 zone. So someone can still seek rezoning to C3. The, instead of deviations, conditions, which are allowed by use by council, would be the way to, to address development in that zone. And the second one, address, excuse me, 6K addresses the urban general commercial zone, which we know we have seen a lot of. This removes, the amendment here removes the ability of Planning Commission to provide deviations for auto-oriented uses, which we didn't see too many of. We did see quite a few requests for deviations from building height mass. We did kind of assessment of what building height are people asking. The UGC zone was four stories. Most of our requests were to five stories. So this amendment just allows five stories in the urban general commercial zone. That was what most people were asking for is a deviation. And it seemed appropriate to amend the zone to allow that by right. So the, if you were rezoned UGC prior to the effective date of this ordinance amendment, you're capped at a 12,000 square foot building footprint. Otherwise, the, that building footprint requirement is removed. So this is one we had quite a few folks asking about, understanding how this would work. And then, like all of these, the normal Board of Zoning Appeals process would be triggered. Also, 6K addresses a C4 maximum height. This was intended to provide additional height where appropriate in our C4 zone, which is kind of where we see our bigger commercial uses like Hamilton Place. This deletes that maximum building height deviation. And variances would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then lastly, lot size, lot frontage and setbacks. This removes deviation process for standards. They're in the subdivision, excuse me, they're in the zoning ordinance, but we were using the subdivision process to address these. So you do have some possibilities for variances in the subdivision process. But anything in the zoning ordinance, really, we cannot do variances by Planning Commission or they really need to be going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So anyone who needs a height variance would, in this case, again, go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we can provide more specifics on those. I think that is kind of the overview. And anything that is Planning Commission's giving approval for would default to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is allowed under state law.
Thank you, Karen. Councilwoman Burris?
Thank you. Would you go back to the first one? I believe it was 6I? Okay. Talk a little bit about that more.
Okay. The suburban, because these are mostly being done through the subdivision process, you would not see these. So you're probably, you just wouldn't be exposed to these being done. They would be handled through.
So this is for subdivisions?
It's mostly handled in subdividing property. And if you're in the suburban area, there is this complicated calculation where you're looking at the blocks or the properties on either side and trying to determine based on those lot sizes, what your lot size would be. And this was put in, I don't remember when Jack Benson was in office, but this was put in for areas where we had someone would be going in and rezoning or subdividing property was much smaller than the R1 property nearby. Now, when you read the zone, if the amendment goes through, when you read the zoning ordinance, the lot size in the, in the zone will be the lot size. You will not have to go back and look at the subdivision.
So in English?
Yes. They're, so for, for the suburban?
So I have a district with a bunch of old houses that have large lots. And let's say somebody wants to subdivide their property. Can they subdivide it for a product that doesn't anywhere look like the neighborhood?
So we most, I believe, saw these used out in East Brainerd, the, where you have a very large lots, very deep lots. And those were the triggers. And I can pull where we've been using these. But in that case, most inner suburban lots like Brainerd, I don't think would be big enough to subdivide and trigger this.
I'm thinking about Hickory Valley Road, where the lots are gigantic. And there are some in my area.
You're right.
All I'm saying is, I'm, I'm, I didn't think I was dense, but I don't know what this says. In English, what does this say?
Well, and we can, I can pull the ones. So this basically says, if your R1 zone says 7,500 square feet, you have to look in the, outside the urban overlay. And you need to identify the lot sizes around you to see if you can go down to 7,500 square feet. You might not be able to meet that minimum. You might have to, based on the calculation and what surrounds you, do a larger lot.
Okay. So what it's saying, I think, is you have to have the lots look like the surrounding area.
That's correct. It's intended to be compatible with surrounding lots.
Fine. Thank you.
And then urban infill was the same, except it's kind of the reverse. So we have larger lots and we wanted more smaller urban infill lots. And that was kind of the flip side of trying to get smaller lots allowed by looking at lots of record on either side.
I'm cool. I just was trying to.
Yeah. But just to be helpful, we'll pull where we've had the suburban infill and urban infill, if possible.
I'm really okay. It didn't say urban here. Like there's, it's a, you're addressing two areas.
That's correct.
With different characters. And that's cool. I'm with that. This wasn't clear to me.
Yes, thank you.
I guess it's that. You can still request a rezoning, any parcel to a smaller lot size. Once it's rezoned to a new zoning district, you can come in and subdivide at a smaller lot size. What this is doing is removing a process that really didn't, didn't work under state law that would allow the Planning Commission to make some of these decisions. And going forward with the new zoning ordinance, we're going to try to put as much flexibility in the new zoning ordinance going forward this year. So to address anything like this, hopefully, there'll be another way to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, can you go to the C4 slide, please? Will you walk me through that one real quick again? And correct me if I'm wrong. We used to be at a limit of 35 feet. I introduced legislation that took that to 70 feet, mostly to allow redevelopment of large concreted parking lots. And I think it was, does this have an impact on that?
It does. So I think one of the reasons we did this was because you can do 35 feet and then set back and go up. But we might have a large concrete parking lot, but it's a parcel because someone has bought that to develop a hotel, for instance. But it's part of a larger commercial complex. So that was saying, let's look at going up as a deviation. So now there would be, you would be able to set back and go up. At some point, you might be limited. At that point, you would have to get, if you wanted height over that, you would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So this would mirror what we are seeing in O1? With the setback?
Where you?
For each, for each, yeah. For each story that you go up, you have to have 10, is it 10 feet? 10 feet per story?
Right. It's one end, one end. In most, that's a pretty common language. I would need to confirm in C4. I was not, I was not prepared to double-check that language. But I will confirm in C4. But I think the situation we had was that the site is really large and could have possibly accommodated the height. But because it's from the lot line and those had been created to sell out out parcels that we were running up against, you couldn't go in enough to go up because you didn't have enough lot size. And we were trying to address redevelopment of out parcels.
So the intent of the raising to 70 feet, are we, are we stripping that intent away?
I don't think the, it would be based on your, your configuration and meeting your setbacks. So this is some, all these are going to be pushed to the consultant to be addressed in the zoning code update. Because we know that that's a situation that we tried to develop a tool for. And it's been used, I believe, once, if not twice, in the East Brainerd area. So we do know that there is a need for that.
Okay. I'm still a little fuzzy on it. And since I introduced that legislation, testified before Boza to, to see it through, I'm a little, I just want to make sure that I'm not seeing this unwound because I thought it was a very useful tool as we look to redevelop. And we talk about going vertical quite often. And we have a lot of redevelopment to do in East Brainerd on large concreted parking lots.
Right. And I think, yes, I think in one of the, when we developed this tool, we also talked about the possible set, the setback being possibly, or height being related to the larger zone. So I have all of Hamilton Place in that zone. Perhaps it's related to that so we can get the height. So we will just have to find another tool for that situation.
Okay. Keep me, I'm not going to keep us much longer on this. This is part of an overarching redevelopment plan for large areas of concrete, stormwater management, the whole gamut is involved in when I did that. And it made sense. And I watched what was built and it's been very successful.
I think we all support absolutely redevelopment. And I would even say these height questions are one that we have to look at, area by area, parcel by parcel. All, again, this is doing is just trying to push those decisions to the City Council or in some cases, to Board of Zoning Appeals. It's just take, it's just trying to relieve Planning Commission of that role because honestly, Planning Commission never really had the authority. So we need to just find another tool.
Okay. Well, Dan, I will agree with you 100%. If that decision had not, had been at City Council, I would have much rather seen it here than where. So if, so I will agree with you 100% on that. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, can you go back to, I think I want to make sure I understood maybe what Dan just said might have cleared it up. This basically just keeps it from going to RPA. Because I'm, I guess I'm, what I'm concerned about is the suburban infill lot frontage and setback. Like that just gives me the heebie-jeebies. Because once it leaves Planning Commission, we don't see that in the subdivision.
That's correct. And it's been in the subdivision, it would think about, oh, probably 10 years. Excuse me, it's been in the zoning ordinance as an option, I would think about 10 years. So I can do a little bit of a summary of what that is and how it's been used and send that out. But yes, you're right. You've not seen that. It's been on the books. I think the urban infill lot compatibility option's just been used more often. We might have heard that. And that's why we did the RTZ amendment. The suburban infill lot frontage and setback option, Brian Schultz, our staff, who oversees the Development Services, said that a lot of times, it just gets forgotten in the process. It's such an outlier.
Well, I mean, I've had occasions in my district that people have emailed me and said, hey, you know, can you check on this? Because they do the infill and it's not compatible with what's up and down the road. And this one concerns me a little bit.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that I completely understand what we're about, about ready to do here, so.
Okay. We'll, I'll do a summary, show how we do the math. And then we can pull, I hope, we pull these numbers for something. I can see if we can pull the numbers for how often and where that has been used and show some examples, just screenshots of how those lots end up looking. Because this has been going on. And just so you understand the frequency and where it's being used. So we'll do that.
Sounds really helpful. Thank you, Karen. Any other questions on those? Okay. It looks like we're good to move on to the resolution.
Okay. And the resolution is addressing a change to state law. We have been doing staff-approved final plats for about two years. And get to my notes. In 2020, TCA was amended to, that gave Planning Commission the right to delegate final plat approval to staff. So staff has been able to approve final plats of two lots or less since that time. So the past two years, Planning Commission delegated the right to staff. RPA staff have been approving final plats of lot, of two lots or less since that time, subdivisions. A recent change, a state law change requires approval from the municipal legislative body that is subject to this jurisdiction of the Regional Planning Commission. And you can do five lots. So Planning Commission, two years ago, Planning Commission could delegate authority for two-lot plats. Now, state law change is, the council can delegate authority to the Regional Planning Agency staff to approve less than five lots. And this is the practice we've been doing for several years. We think it is efficient. It moves the subdivision process along and allows us to address plats quickly. We do quite a few staff-approved plats. And we are asking, and Planning Commission is recommending, that you delegate the authority to Regional Planning Agency. We're going to County Commission next week with the same request. And we have reached out to all the smaller jurisdictions that we partner with to have them make sure they're aware of this and processing it also. So we're, been kind of holding off. So we are ready to move forward if we're delegated this authority.
Okay. Oh, you do? Okay. Councilwoman Burris?
Sure. So if I have a larger lot and want to create, subdivide and create three lots, they all meet zoning requirements. I go through the subdivision plating process. This would allow me, this would allow staff to approve three lots or four lots. So the, so before it was two, so I could subdivide my lot into another lot, this would just expands that number. And I don't know what the driver was at the state level. So this is not a full subdivision. When we use the term subdivision, we're talking about just subdivision of property, not a full subdivision.
So, so you can approve me subdividing my property into three lots? And then does it come to council?
It doesn't. So major subdivisions go to Planning Commission. In the state of Tennessee, subdivision authority is given to planning commissions. So that is why City Council, County Commission, or Walden, or Signal, they don't see, and those legislative bodies do not see plats. Plating, that plating authority is given. And I think that's why in 2020, Planning Commission could delegate the authority because it is a planning commission process. So, and I don't know. We have this discussion occasionally. But yes, that authority is given to regional planning commissions. So you all do not see plats.
So I guess what I'm missing here is? So I guess what I'm missing here is if somebody in my neighborhood wants their property subdivided, the neighborhood never knows about it. If it's five lots or three lots, or the council doesn't see it.
We do not, we advertise it in the paper. We have a rundown of all the subdivisions in the legal notice, which I know not many people perhaps view. But yes, we do not, it is not a, it is more based on the merits of the engineering and review. It is viewed differently from zoning cases. And I would defer to Phil, if he wants to give any input on that. But the subdivision process is viewed a little bit differently and a little bit more narrowly than the rezoning process.
It's pretty much as simple as what the state give us, the state has taken away right now. And they allowed the, the planning commissions to have more authority previously. They've now taken it back here. And they're saying that no more than five lots, unless you've got some sort of preliminary plan that goes all the way through the process, can be done by subdivision. But they are allowing that, no more than five lots.
Okay, so my question has to do with, so District 8. You could go in and subdivide an area in District 8 for use by whomever? And, and the representative nor the neighborhood would ever know about it?
We provide the...
Because people don't look at those notices.
Right. The subdivision, when you get the regional planning agency packet, the planning commission packet, the subdivisions are listed in the front. Those are more the major subdivisions or variances, not just one or two lots. So that is one, but we do not post a sign just that this, we do not post a sign for major subdivisions. There are, note, they are listed in your packet. That's probably the way you would become aware of them as a council person.
Is there signage up front when?
We do not. We post signage, I believe, for variances for subdivisions. We have fewer of those, so I'd have to check that.
There's kind of two ways to do subdivisions. There's minor subdivisions that are just staff-approved. Be under five if you approve this. So if you came in, or your neighbor came in, they had, they would still have to meet the zoning districts for the lot size. If they could bring in a plat, it would get reviewed by engineering, public works, everybody. But then staff would approve that minor subdivision.
I think it's notice that, that concerns me. I, I can see several of the neighborhoods going, what? How did this happen? And, and so I guess maybe it's, I don't care who makes the decision, but the bottom line is there's not a requirement for notice or hearing or anything.
We, we do for the major. We have had this discussion just in the years that I've been here and it's come up at Planning Commission, too. I think that one of the changes we made several years ago was to do a complete description of the subdivision in the legal, which I know has many downfalls. And I think one of the things that, and I will kind of paraphrase my understanding or memory of the discussion at Planning Commission, was that if we post a sign, it does notify people. But the plating process is much more the engineering technical sign-off. It has to meet the zoning that council has passed. And then all these standards and requirements of the subdivision regulations. And if it does that, then it is a technical sign-off. It is a little bit different. And maybe we could do a quick education, like the difference between zoning and subdivision. So the thought of, okay, we could notify people, but then when they come to Planning Commission, that the review is, is different from zoning.
Oh, I don't care about, it's that, it's the issue of no notice. I don't think that reading, nobody reads those notices. And so neighborhoods could get, could get affected without ever knowing it happened. That's the only thing.
We're looking at updates to the subdivision regulations right now. And we will be bringing those to Planning Commission in the next couple of months. And we can look at what they do in other places in Tennessee, Memphis and Knoxville. But I'm pretty sure, I'd be surprised if any of them had a whole lot of signed modifications for subdivisions. But they might, we're on the lookout, I'm sure.
And our discussion has just been, it's, you know, we understand and we are, I think you're in agreement. It is hard if you have people come to Planning Commission and lots of public feedback. But their review is so much more limited on that it, we, how do you? We want to hear people come and let them know we're notifying them, but then Planning Commission might not be able to respond.
I don't care if y'all do it. That's not the issue. It's that the people who live in the area have no idea that government is coming in and messing with their stuff without any notice. That, that's the only thing.
We can talk about it. And so we did make the one change about trying to do legal, but we do understand, yes.
It sounds like a matter of private property law. That you, if you meet XYZ criteria by right, you're allowed to rezone your property, or not rezone, to divide your property into pieces and it's nobody's business. Am I understanding?
You're meeting all the requirements, the technical requirements of the subdivision regulations. The, the actions already been taken by council saying, here's the zoning. And then, you know, the subdivision regulations is really robust of how that's going to happen then.
I own six acres. I can divide it up for my children and grandchildren and nobody, it doesn't, it's none of your beeswax.
Oh, gosh, one of the, your comments, and I've lost my train of thought on that. But we will bring that up and then, gosh, I'm sorry. I can't remember my other thought. I'll mention that if I think about it later. Okay? And then we have the Area 11 Plan.
Councilwoman Burris, do you have anything else for now? Okay. Yeah, so we're ready to move into our Area 11 Plan with Eric.
And this, Eric McTravers is going to present, and we kind of have two versions depending on time. He's got a summary version that's about five to eight minutes. If you all want more detail, he's got about 10 minutes after that. But he's prepared kind of for the five to eight-minute overview. And then we have a printout of the whole presentation, just so, we'll provide that just so you don't miss anything.
Okay. Well, we're coming up on five, so let's do the five to eight minutes in case any of my colleagues have questions.
Okay. And I have one technical slide at the end because we have a request to tweak the map in the plan. So I'll just come up after Eric's wrapped up and mention that.
All right. Good evening, or afternoon or evening, I guess 5 o'clock. Councilors, my name is Eric McTravers. I'm with the Community Planning Design Team under Karen Hunt. It's a Division of RPA. And I'm here to give you a brief overview of the East Brainerd Area Plan as recommended for adoption by Planning Commission in July. The planned adoption vote will be on August 23rd agenda. Staff also has draft plan documents available for you for your review. We can bring that to council office if you, if you'd like. And before I begin, I would like to acknowledge Chairman Ledford for his support throughout the planning process. He's really amplified the voices of the community and make sure that the issues that were vocalized are being addressed by the plan. So we appreciate your enthusiasm for planning and your support during the process. Okay. So this is East Brainerd as delineated by the plan document. It's about 11 square miles, roughly 20,000 people live here. So it's east of I-75 and South Chick Creek to the southwest, north of Georgia State Line, and then goes out eastward to the furthest extent of the city-county, city boundaries. Just lost my slides on there. Karen? Okay. Okay. All right, so we'll come back on. Technical difficulties, but y'all can see it, right? Okay, we're good. All right. So as I said, yeah, 20,000 people, roughly 11 square miles. East of this area was Area 12 Plan, which was adopted two, three years ago. That's Udaquan, Appleson, if y'all are familiar with that one. And of course includes Hamilton Place Mall and Gun Barrel area. A lot of longstanding neighborhoods have been there for many decades, so. Let's go to the next slide. Community engagement. So we sent out a direct mailer to all property owners and many residents. We have an email list of over 700 people. Over the course of the plan effort, we had nearly 3,000 individual responses to the various public input processes, surveys, whatnot, which I think was a pretty good accomplishment, given that most of that was happening during COVID. So it was almost entirely online process, but we managed to squeeze through it despite those hardships. I'll also add that our website has a pretty full breakdown of the public engagement process. Includes a lot of other resources, too, like a detailed existing conditions report and, and just the whole plan process kind of from start to finish, just detailing those different phases, if you'd like to go into that detail. So I'm going to quickly cover what we heard and the plan's recommendations to address those concerns. These are your top issues from constituents in that area. Number one issue far and away is congestion and road maintenance, transportation. But we also heard things about desire for more walkability on, on and around Gun Barrel Road. People wanted to see kind of limiting more of that strip commercial-style development on East Brainerd Road. And then, of course, housing, people are concerned about preserving their single-family neighborhoods, not seeing much change on that front. But we also heard counter to that, or complimentary to that, people are concerned about housing choice, right? We are facing a housing crisis and addressing affordability and housing supply. And then lastly, on natural systems, open space, flooding was definitely a concern that we heard about, especially on Davidson Road and kind of balancing floodplain development. And then also more active green spaces. You know, Heritage Park is definitely a jewel, a gem for, for that area, but access to and, and availability of, of active green spaces was a concern out there. So real quick, I'm going to talk about the centers and corridors approach. This is a sort of planning framework that you, that we're using now for area plans and going forward for future area plans. It has three kind of main components, I guess. So the first one is walkable clustered centers. We want to focus retail and concentrate it really in those places and, and focus our capital improvements for biking and walking and things like that in those areas. The next one is transit supportive corridors that are existing and planned in the future, if that's a desire for, for council or for residents to expand transit services. And we want to diversify the types of uses along those corridors, not just for retail, but, you know, offices and multifamily that can accommodate more of that housing supply. And then lastly, sort of the supportive medium and higher-density housing around the centers and the corridors both. So this is kind of a shotgun approach that addresses a lot of those issues that were vocalized. There are some other recommendations in the plan that I can go into later if there's a desire to hear those things. But this is really kind of the, the core of the plan's strategy to address those, those issues. This is the place types map. This is our future land use map framework that we use, not just to recommend future uses, but also the desired development form. So you see, far and away, the most common color on that map is yellow. That's our suburban residential place type. It's roughly analogous to the R1 zone. There's some accommodations for other types of zones if they meet certain kinds of criteria, but almost, you know, 80% of this area, we're saying, sounds good, keep it the same. Congestion's a problem over here. We don't want to grow these areas too much, given, given the way that the area's already been built out. So however, there are opportunities for targeted areas for growth, such as along those corridors and at those identified centers. And I believe that wraps up my expedited one, my expedited briefing. Oh, I have one more point to, to add. Planning Commission also asked for information about growth projections, such as how much residential growth could be accommodated by the plan. Our modeling shows that the, these land use recommendations can easily accommodate future growth projected out to 2050. So, and now I'm finished. So, and as I said, you know, I've got more detail if we'd like to go into that to address some of those other identified issues, but I'll stop there if there's any questions.
Okay. We do.
Okay.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Eric, to your entire team, I spoke before the Planning Commission last month in support of this plan. This has been a very intensive plan. It involved quite a lot of different neighborhoods. And I remember putting that, those teams together and getting the information out. But what you all had done, and we worked through many outlets if, in case, when we're moving forward, such as Nextdoor, not one of my favorite platforms, but it's very effective in getting messages out. If you need to get like survey, I can hit 3,500 residents like instantly. So it did, it did, that's why you saw the numbers relatively impressive with, with the, with the input. I just want to say thank you for, to your team because you allowed me to come in in the very beginning and we sat for hours at that map up on, in the DRC. And I really feel like you listened. There's a lot of R1 componentry and there's a lot of R1 focus. There's also a lot of focus on hands-off. When you mentioned Davidson Road in particular, most people don't realize, I know, there's not sewer running along most of Davidson Road. And those areas are in the 100-year floodplain. They're also in the floodway. So you listened, and I really appreciate that. And putting density along where it needs to be, obviously along Gun Barrel, obviously along East Brainerd Road to a certain point, but protecting those corridors and not letting them turn into all the way into the county as 100% commercial, high-density corridors is something I've been focused on for a long time. And I just really feel like you listened because I know that I get hundreds of emails from residents over the years and they tell me what they want to see and what they don't want to see. So great work. I appreciate what you all have done and allowing me to be part of that process. And I think that this plan represents a really good roadmap as to how zoning is translated and, and conducted in the near future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, it looks like, Eric, that our bottoms can only tolerate as much as, as we can. So I think that we don't have any more questions. I, I think that I am not alone when I say I'm ready for some area plans in District 2. And I see some nods. I think we're all excited about the planning work that's coming, Dan. Thank you, Karen. We appreciate your thoroughness. It looks like you have something to add.
I do. This is the less fun part of this. The map that you're seeing now is very similar to the map in the plan. It's kind of a smaller eight and a half by 11. And we as staff are just requesting for greater readability to replace. The Planning Commission recommended document the map in that plan with 11 by 17. There'll be no content change. But what you as council adopt is what we use as the, you know, our adopted policy. And having a larger map to communicate would be helpful. And we just didn't catch that at Planning Commission. So we would just have that with parcels and just slightly bigger, just as a technicality, we'd like to be able to substitute one map for the other.
Nicole, you good with that? Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, it looks like the board is calm, so with that, I will adjourn us to 6.